Please rise for the pledge.
A flag to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice, Pearl.
Thank you all for coming this evening. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Spurling.
Here.
Trustee Lee. Trustee Hines. Trustee Youngerman. Trustee Marisak.
Here.
Trustee Bond.
Here.
And there is a quorum present this evening, so we'll move forward. Under public participation, we have a public comment, which is a two-minute opportunity for any member of the public that's here this evening to address the board on any topic. If you do have an item on the agenda further down, you don't have to speak now. But if there's anybody else that would like to speak, now is your opportunity. Hearing none, go ahead and move on. The proclamation designating National Night Out. I'll read this and entertain a motion for approval. Whereas the National Association of Town Watch is a sponsoring and unique nationwide crime, drug, and violence prevention program called National Night Out. And whereas the annual National Night Out provides a unique opportunity for the Village of Montgomery to join forces with thousands of other communities across the country in promoting cooperative police, police community, crime prevention efforts. And whereas it is essential that all citizens of the Village of Montgomery be aware of the importance of crime prevention programs and the impact that their participation can have on reducing crime, drug, drugs, and violence in the Village of Montgomery. And whereas police, community partnerships, neighborhood safety, awareness, and cooperation are important themes of the National Night Out program. Now therefore, I, Matt Brawley, Village President, do hereby call upon all citizens of the Village of Montgomery to join the Montgomery Police Department and the National Association of Town Watch in supporting the annual National Night Out. Further, let it be resolved that I, Matt Brawley, President, Village President, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, August 5th, 2014, as National Night Out in the Village of Montgomery. Entertain a motion for approval.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Trustee Hines. Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda this evening, there's three items, I'll read them and then entertain a motion. Minutes of the Village Board meeting of July 14th, accounts payable through July 24th, and the accounts receivable report for June of 2014.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moving second, call the roll, please.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Hines. Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
And that carries four zero, thank you. Items for separate action. Item A is Resolution 2014-012, authorizing the creation of a new stationary food vendor license. And that's from Hernandez Tacos Aurora Transmission. And Jared will handle this one, there you go.
Thank you. Before you this evening, Village Board, there is a resolution to create another stationary food vendor license. This licensing program operates quite similar to liquor licensing programs, where there are none available, you have to create the next one. Mr. Hernandez, with Hernandez Tacos, has approached the village and is requesting one of these licenses for the location at Aurora Transmission, which is on Montgomery Road. Since he has filled out all the paperwork and is, meets all of the criteria, staff is recommending approval of this, of this license. If there are any questions, Mr. Hernandez and his daughter are here, or you can, I'd be glad to answer any also.
Eric, I was just talking to the gentleman, you know that restaurant across the street, Bill's Old Restaurant? I'm trying to get ahold of the owner of that and see if he can use that empty lot over there, that parking lot. It'd be a lot better than front of the transmission, but I mean, I'll vote for it, but I'm just saying, give him more room for it to see it.
And we, if they do go to that property owner, and that property owner is amenable to it, we can always look at, at changing the location via another resolution, but this would allow him to get set up tonight at, at that location.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, the staff or the petitioner on this item?
What are the hours of operation?
They are limited to 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM. We can ask Mr. Hernandez for more clarification if you'd like, but it didn't sound like he would open until closer to noon.
And every day of the week? Okay.
If there are no further questions, I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Trustee Hines. Have a second. Second by Trustee Marisak. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Hines. Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
And that carries four zero. Thank you for coming this evening. That was approved. Move on to Resolution 2014-013, which is a petition for an additional funds and extension of the project completion deadline regarding the ICC Stipulated Agreement 1640. That's the improvements to Light Road Crossing for the BNSF Railroad. With that, I'll ask Engineer Wallers for his report on this.
Probably the most important thing about this request is that no village funds are being expended on the project. This is simply a request for additional funds from ICC to help coordinate the installation of the crossing at, at Light Road. We're basically the, for lack of a better term, the coordinating agency in helping the project get done. The crossing's been repaired, but in order to make the approach, roadway approach is a little safer, they need additional right-of-way in order to transition some of the slopes out there. So, we've worked with ICC to acquire property, they went through the appraisal process, got the appraisals back, have made offers. In order to complete the project, additional funds are needed. So, we've made that request, and since, for pretty much the entire project, things have taken a little bit longer than expected, we've asked for another extension of a year so that we can get the project done next year. So, we would support approval of the resolution. Again, there's no village monies that are involved in the project.
And when this is all said and done, the one resident that lives on the other side of the tracks is going to be very appreciative of this.
Motion to approve.
Have a second.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Hines. Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
And that carries, thank you. Moving on to items for discussion, we have three items this evening, the first one being the liquor license request for Taco Madre. I know that the Taco Madre gentleman is here, and then I'll turn it over to the chief for a summary on this.
Thank you, President Brawley. Village Board members, tonight, I'd like to introduce Israel Garcia. Israel is currently the owner of Taco Madre at 2112 Baseline Road. He has recently opened a restaurant there, several of us have, have eaten there. He is requesting a Class G liquor license at this time. He would like to speak to you on his, on his behalf.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Israel Garcia. I'm from Mendota, small town, about 50 minutes from here. We got another location that we opened up about nine years ago, so I've kind of been around the business for a little while. And we decided to open up a spot here in Montgomery off Orchard and 30, right behind Caterpillar. About four months ago, we opened up, and we've been getting a lot of people requesting, like alcohol, margaritas. So, that's why we were trying to apply for the G liquor license. But besides that, that's pretty much, we just want to sell on the premises. And it'd just be between the hours of, it'd be Sunday through Thursday, nine, I mean, 10:00 AM to 9:00 PM. And on Friday and Saturday, we close at 10:00 PM, so it'd be 10 to 10:00 on Friday and Saturday. And that's pretty much what we were trying to request. People have been, a lot of people have been wanting some, drink some alcohol while the... Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Is that going to be just beer and wine?
It would, he's requesting a Class G, which would be alcohol, so, so hard liquor.
Be mixed drinks and hard liquor, too.
And the G has the 50/50 split?
Yes.
At least 50% of the revenue has to be generated by food.
Also, he, as he mentioned, he has one restaurant in the city of Mendota. He currently owned, or has a liquor license from the state and the city of Mendota.
Awesome. Makes it a lot easier. I think that having a restaurant, I've been pushing for restaurants on that side of town anyway, I think it's completely appropriate for a restaurant, especially one that moved in here four months ago, opened up, served food, amazing food, actually, and there's a lot of buzz on, on that side of town, and then came back later and said, hey, by the way, I'm in your community, I'd like to do a liquor license. I completely support that, I think it's, I think it's appropriate for us to move on that.
Thank you. So, tonight, I'm just looking for direction to either proceed on a background.
I'd support it.
Yeah, I'd support the background.
So, I think we're, we're all set, move forward with that. Typically, what we do is the, you want more information, you're not interested, or, or proceed, so I think it sounds like everyone here is in agreement to proceed with that.
All right, thank, thank you very much.
Awesome.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming.
Good luck.
Move on to the second item for discussion this evening, which is the Montgomery Marketplace Sales Tax Rebate. And with that, I'll turn it over to Administrator Zofel for an intro to this topic.
Thank you, President Brawley. We have a purchaser who may be interested in the Montgomery Marketplace store. He is here this evening, and he has his representative, Mr. Lavelle, who are going to give you, I guess, some background about the stores they currently have and what their plans would be. So, give me a second, I'll pull his presentation up here. Let him go with it. All right, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Lavelle.
Perfect, thank you. I hope you can hear me all right. My name's Kerry Lavelle. I'm an attorney, and I represent an independent grocer that operates under the banner of La Chiquita. The owner of the business is here with me tonight, his name is Alfredo Linares. And if there's any questions along the way that you want to ask, by all means, I'd like you to speak up. We're here because we have been negotiating a deal to purchase the grocery store at 1525 Douglas Road, as well as the real estate at that location. Mr. Linares is a very experienced grocer, and we're going to show you a little bit of how we operate, and what his stores are like, and near the, and, you know, there's, people say, picture's worth a thousand words. We've got a lot of pictures here to show you what it's all about. Near the end of the presentation, we'll also take you through some of the economics of opening a grocery store in the modern times. You know, the markets changed dramatically with the exit of Dominix in the Chicago area, and it's, it's gotten harder, it hasn't gotten easier. The last eight or nine years of the economic downturn has made it more difficult for retailers to go out and find new sites and make them economically viable. And in a grocery store, it is a very expensive proposition because the refrigerant costs are extraordinary, and the EPA keeps changing the rules on that in terms of more environmentally friendly equipment. And I'm giving you that background to tell you that Mr. Linares's stores are all modern stores and built with the best equipment, and with that is a huge price. And you just can't compete in this market by just putting some latex paint over the walls and saying, we've got a brand-new grocery store anymore. Those days are long gone. So, let me take you through some things. This is Mr. Linares's, I think, first store in, in the city of Chicago, and he purchased storefronts and storefronts and storefronts, operates his offices upstairs, and it is a very kind of proud store from when he opened, and he has bigger and better stores now throughout the Chicago area. These are, again, large-scale, nice stores that are, have an emphasis on freshness and perishable departments. And primarily, of course, these are grocery stores. The front ends are all stocked with modern equipment, computerized equipment, all the point-of-purchase sale items, as you could kind of see, as you see in a lot of grocery stores. Again, it's primarily a grocery store. And the items on the shelves are jammed, they're stacked, blocked perfectly. He has, employs many people, and we'll get to that near the end. And is a very strong suit, and in today's market, has to be your perishable department, starting with what I call the main icon of freshness, which is the produce department. And Mr. Linares does a great job in the produce department. You couldn't see it in the other pictures, he has, you know, what I think are very nice flooring in all of his grocery stores, expensive flooring that are very rich to the customer's eye. The produce, these aren't, the pictures aren't, because of the ambient light in the room, you can't see the color in the produce department as much as I'd like. This is all fresh produce brought in six days a week throughout the store. And the, I mean, honestly, this is not some stock photographs that you buy online. These are Mr. Linares's stores. It's a very large, other perishables, meat cases, in deli, the deli case. Even in that photo there, you could see in the back, behind the deli case, one, two, three, four, five slicers. People come in and they want their lunch meat sliced a certain way, they get it exactly the way they want it. All the fresh salads and meats and every kind of cheese you can imagine from the deli department is sold in his stores. There is a hot food section, which in this day and age, folks put a premium on being able to get close-to-table-ready products for their homes. And there's a large selection in the La Chiquita stores, and it is all kind of made to be convenient to the consumer. Fried chicken, and in the meat case, what is really happening in today's market is what's called service meat cases, where it's not just all walk to the meat counter and buy the steak that's in the foam tray. You say, I want that steak, or I want that steak, and they wrap it for you. And it's prepared, or you get the steak just that you want, like an old-fashioned butcher shop. However, if time is of the essence, and you have to run into the store and get your chicken, there is a self-serve meat case also, where you could just go in and buy what you need in a timely fashion. And that's just your typical grocery store or supermarket, but again, at La Chiquita, you can get either fresh meat, fish. The fish department is all fresh fish, no matter what you want, it's available and on ice. And possibly, kind of the mouth-watering department, that I always think when I see it, go into La Chiquita is the bakery, which is just tremendous. It's still yet to be determined whether or not there'll be an actual bakery making from scratch at this location, but Mr. Linares is now kind of looking at that and is leaning that way. He has people that do make these products and ship them out to the stores, and we may have one here in Montgomery. Their work, they do the work right at the stores, there's not an off-site commissary, this is as fresh as it can get. And there's fresh rolls, there's bread, the pastries come right from their own recipes, apple turnovers, et cetera. And all of this is just part of the operation of La Chiquita. And lastly, in many, including the Montgomery store, hopefully, if we're lucky enough to open a store in Montgomery, there is a restaurant in the stores. And again, that's keeping with the freshness of the operation of La Chiquita. We provide, you know, we have all the finest products, then we have our own cooks, and it is a restaurant sort of right within the store. Some of the La Chiquita stores have a separate entrance and exit for the restaurant, some of the stores have, you have to go into the grocery store to get into the restaurant, and the layout here is still yet to be determined. La Chiquita will have approximately 50 or 60 full-time employees. That's a little different than the business model of a lot of grocers. A lot of grocers have one or two full-time employees in each department, and you're talking only about six departments, and then the store is full of part-time employees. Mr. Linares runs the operation a little bit differently. Here's the, here's the scary part, the construction costs. There is over $3 million in improvements that are needed at this site. And these are the, these are the dollars that we have done time and time again with Mr. Linares's stores. This is an expensive, expensive venture. And for that reason, we have put some pen to paper, talked to Mr. Young about it, and it is impossible to put in a modern-day grocery store in this day and age without some sort of sales tax sharing arrangement between the retailer and the municipality. It is, it is a very, very expensive proposition. So, what's been going on out there? I, I do this regularly for retailers, and it is very common for seeing 15, 20-year terms on agreements that are basically 50/50 deals. There's one there, about four-down SVT, that's a 50% deal, it was front-loaded and started with 90%, and it's a 20-year deal that went down to 7% in the 20th year. But basically, this 50% is what's happening. Now, these are current, I mean, these are in order, they start in 2013, this is not old data, down to 2012. And then my next slide here, I have some going back to 2009. The, the landscape has changed dramatically, and this is a result of the economic downturn and the, and the static nature of retailers who cannot possibly invest this kind of money without a, an arrangement where some tax dollars can flow back to the retailer. We're seeking a 15-year deal at 50% sharing. It is sort of right square in the middle of what's going on out there in the market, and we, we need it to be able to make this thing happen. The economics are such that after that $3.2 million number for equipment that you saw, there's another $700,000 of inventory that goes in the store. And yes, I know, you turn that inventory and you turn it into dollars, but, you know, the gross profits on a grocery store are so thin, you have to turn it and turn it and turn it and turn it before you start generating money to pay off the loan. At $4 million, the loan will be clicking off at about $160,000 a year. So, the first $160,000 of profit just goes to pay the debt on this, on this building and the build-out. So, it's, it's hard. It really is hard. Mr. Linares is here to make a serious commitment to the community. Our agreements are stack up, stacked up where La Chiquita will own the grocery store and the real estate. This is not a quick-flip kind of arrangement, this is a commitment to the community. And, and that's what we're looking for, and that's what we're asking for, and if, if you do agree, we would appreciate it. And if you have questions for me on some of the economics, I hope I can answer them. If you have questions on the operation of the grocery store, the owner is right here, and he'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah, go ahead.
When you were talking about the layout, you said the layout is still TBD. I'm try, I'm in that store a lot, so I'm trying to figure out where you would fit everything in, including this restaurant that you're talking about. So, my question is, are you just going to work with the shell of that building and redo everything inside, or do you anticipate having to add on to the building as well?
I don't think there's any plans right now to add on to the exterior perimeter.
The building is 37,000 square feet, and we can fit everything in there. I have, this would be the biggest one, I have a one on Rockford that's 32,000 square feet, and I have all that.
Okay.
And the smallest one is where I have my office, the little one they show, and I started there 28 years ago. I don't have a bakery in there, but I do have a seating capacity for 50 people. Two aisles, but what it does, it's really something.
In the restaurant?
In the restaurant.
Okay.
Yeah, in the restaurant, so.
And where is the Chicago location?
3555 West 26th Street, Central Park and 26th Street.
Mm-hmm.
I grew up on that area, so I've been, most of my life, living there, so. And I have all, I have my offices on that building. I don't have offices on the other stores. From that little store, I run all the stores. And it's, I don't know, it's in the heart. I started there. I started there, and from there, I control everything. Six stores.
Okay. And how long do you think the whole process would take to, to make all the improvements?
To make all the improvements, I did it in Rockford. I thought we were going to do it in five months. It took us eight. So, you know, to really turn around everything, I would have to say, you know, anywhere from six to eight.
Okay.
In the numbers that we saw displayed, were there plans for the exterior of the property, the facade, the parking lot?
He says, are there any plans for the exterior, the, the exterior parking lot or facade?
Yes, the parking lot. The parking lot leads attention, and I just got a quote to redo the whole surface of the parking lot, you know, and the sign, the sign is going to be a good amount of money, but just for the parking lot, we're talking like $196,000. But I mean, you do the parking lot and you'll be seeing it for the next 15, 20 years, just maintaining it, you know? But right now, that's, you really got to put some money to take everything out, just the parking lot outside.
Trustee Hines, did you have something?
Yeah, and there's a way to get in off of Montgomery Road. You, the one that's people that got it now, that's a private road, but there's agreement with Anderson's, that the people that run the store now have got to pay for that, fix that road. Are you going to get that road fixed?
At the Eastman, I probably would, because it's, it's an Eastman.
It's full of holes.
It's an Eastman, yeah. So, if I'm going to, you know, do something in there, I'm looking to do something in there and see what my neighbor next door has in mind, because he's got a parking lot just, you know, to the side of the store. So, you know, we're looking into it to, to see if there's anything we can do with him.
Yeah, because if you do fix it, it, don't do any good to patch it, you're going to have to have it ground down, then, then put a whole new surface on it.
I think we're talking about a whole new surface.
Yeah.
Whole new surface. You're welcome.
Any other questions from, from staff on this, or from the petitioner today? It's, it's an interesting position for us to be in today. I think there's been a lot of talk about the Douglas Road corridor, and it needs a lot of work. We've had a few businesses close in there, and we could use this type of development in our community. And we, about two months ago, this board approved a sales tax referendum, so we're asking residents to vote on whether or not we should increase the sales tax. So, I think that, I mean, for me personally, that kind of puts us in an odd situation where we would be asking residents to vote on this, and then at the same time, entering into agreements with, with prospective development. So, it's, I'm not saying that it can't be done, I just figured I'd mention the obvious, that, something that we're working on.
And what's the, what's the timeline that you would be looking at starting?
Six to eight months, six to eight months.
From today, or six to eight months?
From today, or six to eight months from, six months from now?
We order equipment and get, uh, you know, an architect to start moving things around, and a, a lot of that equipment's got, uh, and the electricity, so it's a lot of, a lot of work on it. So, you know, that's what I figure, any, anywhere from six to eight months.
We, we are working now on completing the agreements, and the agreements are contingent upon what happens here, maybe not today, but in the next few weeks. We have an anxious seller. I think he does not want to be in the food business, I think. And, um, and, and the closing, to get to your point, will be once this is resolved, if it's resolved.
Okay. Uh, if there are no other comments or questions from, uh, the board for the petitioner on this, um, we'd really like to get a consensus from the board whether or not we should look, I, I would like to say whether we look into it or whether we're not interested. If we're not interested, it'd be great to tell the petitioner that today. Um, if you do want to look into it further, I think there's some, uh, missing pieces in my mind right now as to, um, how much that store currently generates for us, because that would be actually a negative. Um, but anyway, there's a lot of stuff I think that staff can maybe delve into a little bit.
I think we should look into it.
Mm-hmm. I do, too.
Okay. That was quick.
All right. Then what we'll do is, um, staff has already gathered some of the information that, that President Brawley is discussing, but we will, uh, put together a recommendation for you. We will work with the, the petitioner over the next couple of weeks, um, asking them some questions, and then we'll try and bring a package to you at the meeting on the 11th that you can consider.
Excellent.
That's wonderful. Thank you all for your time. I do appreciate it.
Can I say something?
Yes.
Uh, if anybody here would like to see some of my stores or the operation that I run, I gladly show it to you. You know, I have a store here close about two miles, and I had it for 22 years, an Ashland and Union. So, you know, it's a small store, 10,000 square feet, and it's a very good store, very good store, so.
Four miles from here?
Two miles from here.
I'd be interested in looking at it.
I would, too. Maybe we can.
Uh, call me, and if you're interested to look at that one, or the ones down by Cisero Chicago, so you could see what I'm all about.
You got a card?
Fortunately, I don't, and that's the, I will get some cards.
Like I said, we'll get, we'll get information, and maybe we can try and set up something. If people are interested, we can find a date where everybody could, who's interested could go.
Okay. Excellent.
I'll make myself available. All right?
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to the, uh, Item C for discussion this evening, which is the boundary agreement with the Village of Sugar Grove. And with that, I will ask Senior Planner Chipman for a summary on this.
Thank you very much. Before you this evening is, excuse me, staff has been working with the Village of Sugar Grove to renew the boundary line agreement that was established in 2001. Uh, it sets the boundary line in the exact same place, uh, down the Comed Rodeo Way, uh, through Jericho Road, and then, uh, down 47 and out west, along the county line. Uh, the, that map is attached to your packet. Uh, as I mentioned, it, uh, extends the 2001, uh, agreement, uh, from this date by 20 years. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
The last agreement must have been 15 years, then?
I believe that is the case.
Is there an advantage to us to lengthen it, or?
I, I believe we decided to work on this agreement, uh, a little earlier than the, uh, final date so that we have something established, and we can move on to the other four municipalities. I know Director Young, uh, desires to keep moving on to all the other municipalities.
I mean, this boundary, I think, is pretty stable, and so I think 15 or 20 years either way is probably okay. It gives us, we're, we know what we've got then for, for a little longer then, but.
Some of our other, I think one of our other agreements has expired, correct?
That is correct.
The Aurora one. Are we working on that one right now as well?
We are. It has been a little challenging, uh, uh, just to set up some times to meet with Aurora.
I don't hear any objections to this, the 20 years, so. You know what? Since there's two board members, just don't put this on consent for the next board meeting, since there's two missing today, so. Awesome. Appreciate it. We'll move on. Um, Item Eight, which is new or unfinished business. Do we have any to come before the board this evening?
I'd like to see them get the weeds cut from Center Park Avenue, but it's a whole lot, it's a big lot. And then that, on Montgomery Road, those, uh, townhouses that face Montgomery Road, that, that weed's about that tall, in that retention area there. That needs to be taken care of. That's all I have.
Okay.
I had, uh, reached out to Jared and asked about the, our sign ordinance for temporary signage, the Macy's Shoes, signs that are blowing and breaking down and have been there for quite some time, so to look into that and find out if they're in compliance or out of compliance, or there's, they've been there for quite some time, and same thing with the weeds. I mean, the weeds are three feet around those signs, which tells me they've been there for quite some time.
I'd like to renew our discussion at the last meeting, I think, in part for the benefit of Attorney Anderson. A number of us have received complaints about large and illegal fireworks, and in reality, we were still seeing scattered explosions over this last weekend, which was, my gosh, four, almost a month after the holiday. So knowing the police can't be everywhere, and that it's a difficult enforcement issue, we still resolved, I think, to put our heads together in some kind of creative, out-of-the-box, or other, any kind of thinking we can muster, to begin to address and discourage that kind of behavior. And while we have a few months to do that, it wouldn't hurt to maybe begin the process while the issue is fresh in our mind, and when we still have time to explore some options. So I just wanted to restate that again.
We had, uh, three last night by our, in our neighborhood, that they were, I'll, I'll refer to them as significant explosions when they shook the house.
I'm amazed. I think we'd be proud to have some of these in the, in Montgomery Fest. It's amazing, and, uh, that has to present some risk to the users of them and to the neighboring houses.
Yeah, I saw the report after that meeting. The, um, the number of calls that we had last year actually was down from the year before. Um, I would agree with you that it was definitely the opposite as far as, um, the amount going off. Maybe people are kind of okay with it, but, um, I think it's something that we need to think about a little bit. I, I read your comments from the last meeting, um, and potentially maybe after Montgomery Fest on, uh, at the August 11th meeting, maybe we can discuss that, because I think we'll probably have a full board at that meeting. Is that, that's okay with everybody?
Good, good. Thank you. Oh, if, are we on new business and then, honey?
Yeah.
I did want to mention that the, um, our first effort at Floral Display Awards went very well with the help of staff and several volunteers. We recognized 32 properties, which is, I think, a good start for a new program, and had a lot of fun with it. It was, it's much more fun to judge in the summer than it is in the winter with the, but I, I believe there was great interest in continuing the program, and we had some, a lot of Facebook postings from proud people with the sign in there, yeah.
Anything else? All right. Hearing none. Future, uh, Village Board meetings, you can see there, Monday, August 11th, and then you can read them on down. And then note, next Tuesday night is National Night Out. That's why we're wearing the T-shirts today. I feel like we should address that. Most people are just aware of it, but, um, hope to see everybody out next Tuesday night, so. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Trusty Hines, Trusty Marisak.
Yes.
Trusty Bond.
Yes.
Trusty Spurling.
And we're adjourned. Sorry.